All our regular scheduled council meeting Tuesday, June 24th at 7:00 PM. Ms. Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Charlie Davidson.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Linda Westhofer.
Here.
Charles Swinkie. Terry Osborne. Troy Hill.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Pastor Burford will lead us in our invocation tonight, and our former mayors will lead us in the pledge as soon as that's done. If you'll please stand.
Beloved God, our heavenly Father, thank you for our community. It's growing, and we thank you that it's growing, and pray a blessing upon these who serve the community in various capacities, and thank you for them, and pray wisdom upon each one of them, and may they work together for the good of the community, and may this community be a light to communities around. And we pray a blessing upon the Sedgwick County and its officials and the peoples of these areas around here. We pray for our police, and we're grateful for them, and pray that you would bless them with safety and wisdom, protecting them as they protect us. And we pray that you'll bless our children, our schools, and our elderly, and all the workforce, and those who serve in many capacities. And Father, we especially thank you for the mayors who have served over the years, and so grateful that we can honor them tonight. May their names stand in recognition of their efforts and also for their example. And may you bless the community with all the visitors and all the commerce, all the community outreach and services that are here. We pray for the safety of the youth that, as they go about the community and going back and forth to school, that they'll be protected. We pray, Father, in light of the troubles in the world, that you would protect us also from any concerns in those areas. Lord, we just lift up to you our thanks, that we can be a community, and pray that you'll bless us now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. You guys want to come forward?
Mayors.
Thank you guys for being here, and if you'll guys will lead the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, to start out, we have approval of the agenda. Brandy.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Charlie.
Second.
Motion by Brandy, second by Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Next, we have awards and presentations. Ms. Dana, if you'd come forward.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and as you can tell, this is truly, this is truly historic evening in Park City, Kansas, tonight. We are so fortunate to have all of our former mayors represented here tonight. So, since the, its incorporation in 1980, the city of Park City has been shaped by the dedication and leadership of 10 individuals who have served as mayor. To recognize their service and honor their contributions to the city's growth and development, the city council directed that, when appropriate, new streets and current and future developments be named in their honor. In alignment with this directive, and in light of the significant development and infrastructure expansion that is taking place throughout Park City, eight new streets are being named in honor of the city's first eight mayors. We are going to proudly recognize them this evening, and in just a bit, I'm going to ask them to come forward, and they will be presented with a street sign in their honor. The first mayor of Park City, Ray Rice. He served from 1981 to 1987. The second mayor, Jack Whitson, 1987 to 1989. And Mayor Rice and Mayor Whitson had previously received their signs, but they're coming back this evening so that they can be part of this historic event. Mayor Larry Gray unfortunately is not able to be with us this evening. He served from 1989 to 1983, and on his behalf, we have, we have his wife, Sue Gray, that will be present to accept his, his sign. It is going to get busy. How exciting is this, everybody? Mayor Jerry Bressler served from 1993 to 1995. Unfortunately, he is not here this evening, but on his behalf, his son is here, so Brent Bressler is here to accept his sign. Okay, Mayor Leonard Biggs, unfortunately, he is not able to be here this evening, but he served from 1995 to 1999. Mayor Olin Hebert served from 1999 to 2001. He is not able to be here this evening. His, his son will be here, so we would ask Donald Hebert to please come forward to accept Mayor Amel Berquist, he served from 2001 to 2005, and then he served again from 2009 Mayor Dee Stewart. Dee served from 2005 to 2009. This special event this evening is an opportunity to celebrate the legacy of leadership that has shaped Park City into the thriving community it is today. We have a former mayor that is here as well. We do not yet have a street that is named after him, but there will be one in the future. So, we ask Mayor Ray Mann to please come forward. And on this historic evening, we would ask our current mayor to please come forward for this opportunity to have this picture that we will have, that is, this is historical, that we will have all of you here this evening. And I would say, on behalf of the community, we thank each and every one of you. It has been an honor to have you as mayors, and it has been an honor for those of us who are staffed to be able to serve with you as well. So, thank you very much.
I just, I guess I just want to say for myself, like, staff put this all together, and what a great tribute to each of you that have served the city and got us to where we are today. You know, we hear so many people say good things about the growth of Park City and all the great things going, but honestly, it's, it's from each of you and your family members that got us to where we were, so we need to take it up and take it somewhere. And I say that, you know, for those that aren't here, we know the sacrifices that you gave, and my wife knows the sacrifices that you gave, having a family member that served on the council. And I personally, I feel honored to, I have served with some of you that are here tonight. And I say thank you, guys, for the service that you gave, and I just hope that nobody ever has to live on Winhane Street. That would be awful, so thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you.
Do I need to give her a sign?
Sean, did you have staff report tonight?
No, sir, not tonight.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Troy, seconded by Brandy, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next, under new business, hold a public hearing and consider approval of an ordinance levying special assessments for improvements in the Bar Estates addition, Ironstone addition, Prairie through addition, Cambridge Valley second addition, Echo Hills commercial addition, Prairie Hills addition, Phase 7, and Saddle Brook third addition. Larry.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Larry Kleeman with Rantin Financial, the city's financial advisor. You recall last month that we reviewed the final cost for the street water and sewer improvements in these various residential developments? We, since then, we sent out notices to all the benefiting property owners about the proposed special assessments, and notified them about the hearing tonight. Per state law, then you, tonight, this hearing allows any of them to make a comment on the matter, and then after that, you can close the hearing and approve the special assessment ordinance in your packet. That authorizes us to levy the assessments to pay for that portion of the bond over 20 years. After that, we also sent out a second notice to all the benefiting property owners, saying this is your final notice, and they have 30 days that they could prepay if they choose to. Most folks don't. In that case, it'll just stay in the bond, and they'll pay it off over 20 years as a special assessment on their property tax rolls. Happy to answer any questions now or later on.
Okay, I do have two people signed up to talk also, but does council have any questions for Larry? Troy.
Are these new assessments? So, would their house payments go up?
Yeah, I mean, when you get your property tax bill in December, you have your general taxes that the city levies, and these are on top of that, special assessments, specifically for improvements.
Okay, so on top of special assessments than they've already had in the past?
No, I mean, these are for, I mean, it just depends, but typically, they have a street water and sewer assessment one time it's levied. So, you know, if there's a street assessment here tonight, they don't have an existing street assessment. There's a water assessment here tonight, they don't. Once in a while, you might have just a paving assessment because they've already done a water and sewer, but I think, for the most part, everybody here is getting just the street water sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. It's 7:14. Okay, and first, I have signed up to speak is Brandy Ritchie.
Hi, thank you for being here. You don't have to state your address. I've got it on here. I know it says that probably, but you don't have to do that.
Okay, I appreciate your guys' time this evening. I really come before the board with more questions than anything. Saddle Brook Homeowners Association purchased three lots within our development with the intention of adding amenities for the homeowners in that area, like a clubhouse, pool, basic things. Through our interactions with the developer, we've run into some problems with getting the three lots, I guess, reclassified correctly. So, these assessments appear to be based off these being single-family homes, which adds $100,000 tax burden to the HOA for this land. So, I did reach out to Mr. Kleeman to see where we were at in that process. We've reached out to not the developer, but the person that actually maps out. So, we just have some unanswered questions about, is this right based off of what this purpose of this land is going to be? So, I just asked for the board to maybe give us that time to figure that out before they send out a $100,000 bill that I have to share with our homeowners, so.
I'll have Mr. Kleeman come up and maybe give us an answer for what your question was.
I spoke to her on the phone, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I, after talking to her, I sent a message to the engineer, I think, for the developer at Baughman, to see what their plan was. Assuming there's, there's, assuming there is no plan, traditionally, since it is technically benefiting from these improvements, they would normally, the HOA would receive these assessments, which then they passed on to their, to the residents in the area. So, I'm still waiting to hear back from Baughman and explore that further to figure out if they had a plan or what the issue is.
Okay. I, I think, I get, and just to make sure I understand this right, like, basically, I guess, for the sake of conversation, I know we're in an open meeting, but let's, let's break it down a little bit. So, they, they put streets in the neighborhood, they put sewer in the neighborhood, and then they split up the cost of all of these things to, let's just say there's 100 lots in the neighborhood. Everybody pays a cut. On each one of these lots is assessed.
Right.
We'll just say there's 100, one hundredth of what that total cost is. So, three of the lots have the cost of streets, sewer.
Correct.
Water, and then, so this is three of those. So, it's still, I mean, the streets still go to the lots, is that what you're saying? And they still receive?
Right, right. I mean, the HOA, if they put a parking lot, put a community building on there, they'll still benefit from the street water sewer potentially. If we were to, right now, say it's one one hundredth of the cost to each of the 100 lots, if we tally that back to 197, then everybody's paying a little more, which is not what was in the original petition. So, I just have a few questions in my mind, which I'm trying to get answered from, from the developer and the engineer. I mean, there are a number of ways to handle it.
Okay. Doug.
I was just going to comment that, along the lines of what Larry's saying, is that these assessments are based upon the raw land. If someone chooses to leave the land undeveloped and pay the specials with nothing on it or putting a parking lot on it, that's their decision, but the specials still benefit that property. So, it's not, it's, it's, as the property sits unimproved, that's the way these were spread, and it was based upon a petition signed by the developer, I think, 100%, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I, it's really a gripe with the HOA or decisions that they're making, not with the city. We need to spread these the way the ordinance says.
Yeah, and just another thought, I mean, if, you know, if the HOA splits up that amongst all the residents, it still has the same effect if we take it off, those three lots, and put it over the other 97 lots. So, in the end, I'm not sure it really matters, but legally, I think, like your city attorney said, that we kind of need to stick with what's in the petition unless there's a good reason to change.
Okay. And did you, the lots, were you guys purchased from the developer?
Correct. We purchased the lots from the developer. The intention was, he was going to develop them into HOA common property, which is taxed differently. We have common property now that is not taxed like a single-family residence. So, we were under the understanding that that's where this was headed, our whole board, until he backed out. And so, that's when we ran into problems with getting the right companies, getting everything reclassified like it needs to be, because everybody wants to work with the developer who does not want to develop these plots.
Her statement's accurate, but that's referring to ad valorem taxes.
Yeah.
Not, not special assessments. And so, the categorization of the, of the property as residential, agricultural, or whatever use is on it, whatever improvements are on it, the ad valorem tax is per the value of the property. That's what ad valorem means. Ours are special assessments based upon the benefit to the property, and the benefit to this property is established by the petition that's, that, that, that was signed by 100% of the owners, probably the developer at the time. So.
Gotcha.
You know, you could change this with the county for ad valorem tax purposes, but that doesn't affect special assessments.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, I was, I was confused. Earlier, you said that it was kind of based on some sort of plan, if the HOA had a plan. Can you explain what you meant by that? I, I guess I was confused by that. Yeah, you had said something initially on that.
Oh, yeah, I was, well, I was wondering if there was an agreement between the HOA and the developer to somehow, you know, that maybe the developer would maybe pay off these specials or what. I, I'm not sure what the background is, is all that I'm saying.
Okay. Was, Brandy, do you know if there was anything like that?
At the time of the purchase of the lots, I don't know that there's anything in writing. We can go back and pull the contract. I honestly didn't know that I would need to look at that, because I kind of got this last minute and went, oh, okay, I have a lot of questions, but I wasn't able to resource the right people to get the right answers before tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
And let me respond again. I'm, I'm sensitive to what difficulties they have, but that's between them and the developer, and that's not for us to solve, and we can't do that at this point. We would be essentially having to go back and punt, or, or do something that would give everybody else that got a little bit extra a reason to sue us, because we're not doing what we initially petitioned and put forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have James and Roxanne Hesterman. Hi there, thank you for coming tonight.
Well, thank you for having us. Ours, of course, we live in the Cambridge Valley second subdivision, and our problem with the specials there is we were never informed that there were going to be specials. When we purchased the home, the contract, here, let me just read it. On the contract for the proration of taxes and reserves, it says pursuant to Kansas law, if property is subject to any special assessments or is located in an improvement district, the seller has by a separate instrument or document disclose to the buyer the amount of the special assessments on the property, or if no special assessments have yet been made, that the property is located in an improvement district. Which separate document has been dated and signed by the seller? Buyer also by signing and dating such separate document has acknowledged that the seller's disclosure relating to special assessments was made to the buyer prior to contract being entered in. And with that, the only thing we have from the seller with his signature and ours is relating to storm sewer improvements.
And we pay those specials.
And we pay those.
Those are done every month.
And this may be an issue we need to take up with the seller, but I don't feel that, according to this and our contract, we should be assessed these things. We were under the impression it wasn't part of the sale.
Well, again, I'm sensitive to this difficulty that they have, but that's between you and the person that you brought from, and the city is not able to, to fix that for you at this point with this ordinance and these special assessments.
Okay. Well, when, our other questions were, when do these, you know, Cambridge Valley, they've been there for several years with the improvements, who has been paying on these for those years?
Yeah, good question. So, Sean, do you want to explain that to them, how that works?
Yes, sir. The city has a policy that we give two years after completion of all the infrastructure improvements. Now, it depends on the various cycles throughout the year. Some projects may get done in February, and some may get done in August. But our commitment to the developers and the builders around here is, we're going to give you at least two years that you can try and sell the properties, get them onto the, the ultimate end property user by that time before the specials even come into effect. So, for the first two years, the city has been carrying the note with the temporary financing. And then, after two years' time period, we roll all these projects in, and that's why there's a total of like 15, 20 different projects in here. That would be the water, the sewer, and the paving from this particular neighborhood, from this particular. So, Cambridge Valley, the builder at the time, sit there and say, we'll give you two years, and then we roll it all into the general obligation bonds, and then we go ahead and sit there and say, now's the time to levy the special assessments so that the city can pay for them.
Any interest that was accrued prior to now, let's say?
Throughout the temporary financing?
Not included in this?
No, it's included. The interest on?
In 2023, though.
Say again?
I didn't own this property in 23. Why would I pay that interest?
Because the petition was put forth by the property owner at the time that said, we are willing to pay for these special assessments, and if they did not convey that to you, if the builder slash developer slash sales individual did not convey that to you, I, I apologize, and like Doug said, we're sensitive to that, but that's, that's between you and the seller and.
So, that's something we need to take up with them, obviously.
I.
I mean, I wonder.
I hate to say that, because it sounds.
Quite honestly, we're not the only ones in the neighborhood. We're the only ones that showed up, but the other neighbors were taken, pretty much taken by surprise by all this as well, so.
Yes, sir.
I guess we'll, we'll have to address that then with our builder or developer, one of the two. Do you have anything going ahead?
I don't think so. I think that was everything.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else present that would like to come up and speak, even if you didn't sign up?
I would like to.
Come on in.
What do you need for?
Just, I'll get your name. Go ahead, what's your name?
My name is Chelsea Humig. I live on.
Your address, it's okay.
Oh, okay.
What's your last name?
Humig, H-U-M-I-G.
Thank you.
First name is spelled C-H-E-L-S-E-Y.
After you get done, if you would give, Sean, just give him your address, that way we have it for, just for the record.
Great, yeah.
I just don't want you to say it on, it's televised, so go ahead.
Sure. So, my only commentary is to request, the letter said it would be over 15-year annual installments, and I looked up, and pursuant to KSA 12-6A10, it's no more than 20, and so my request is just that it be over 20 years instead of 15, so.
It is, it's 20.
Oh, it is 20?
We're doing 20.
Oh, okay. I believe the letter said 15.
The original public notice went out as 15 years and everything, and then several communities around have been going to 20 years versus 15 years, so the council had a discussion during the last meeting and said, we're okay with the policy of going with 20, and so the horse hadn't left the barn yet, and so all the paperwork is for 20 years for all the specials.
Okay, most excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your? And council up for discussion with you or a motion? Charlie?
Does it, does it change anything if we postpone this 30 days to allow some of these residents to get some questions answered? Seems like they're in the midst of trying to get those questions answered.
Well, we, well, if they get their questions answered or not, there's nothing we can do to solve their problem, so.
I'm just saying, would that give them a little extra time? That's my question.
Yeah, I mean. It's, it's important to have this levied so we can issue the bonds and have the levies out there, so I would discourage you from postponing it. I would go ahead and adopt this, and I will make contact with the HOA leader and the developer, engineer that I was reaching out to, just to answer their questions, but I think it'd be best to move forward with this, because we're kind of on a timeline to issue the bonds here in a couple of months to pay off the temp notes that are coming due.
What would be the, what would be the problem if we waited 30 days, I guess?
Well, I think it's probably more a question for bond counsel. I think he likes to have a certain amount of time between when the levies are finalized and we issue the bonds, just to make everything, make sure everything is legal and okay when we issue the bonds in a couple of months. So, that would, might encroach upon the timing for bond counsel.
Okay. What is it, what's the interest rates difference on the temp notes versus the interest rates that we're getting?
Yeah, so we'll have a public sale in a couple of months, and right now, interest rates for 20 years are maybe 4.75, 5% about there. And, yeah, I'm not sure what the temp note interest is at the moment.
Are they normally higher or?
Yeah, I mean, typically, shorter-term temporary notes are, are lower.
Thank you. Brandy.
I move to approve ordinance number 1213-2025, an ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, as previously, previously authorized by resolution numbers 1070-2021, 1132-2022, 1072-2021, 1076-2021, 1077-2021. ten seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one, ten seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one, ten seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one, ten eighty dash twenty twenty-one, eleven ten dash twenty twenty-two, eleven eleven dash twenty twenty-two, ten ninety dash twenty twenty-one, eleven twelve dash twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-five dash twenty twenty-three, ten ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-one, eleven hundred dash twenty twenty-one, eleven oh one dash twenty twenty-one, eight thirty-two dash twenty twelve, twelve fifty-six dash twenty twenty-five, eleven nineteen dash twenty twenty-two, eleven thirty thirty dash twenty twenty-two, eleven forty-six dash twenty twenty-three, eleven twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, eleven twenty-three dash twenty twenty-two, and eleven twenty-four dash twenty twenty-two, and the city in providing for the collection of such special assessments.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Troy?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? This will be a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Charlie Davidson.
Nay.
George Glover.
Nay.
Linda Westhofer.
Aye.
Troy Hill.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Motion passes three, two. Oh, yes.
Requires five votes.
Sorry? What?
Fails.
Okay.
Requires five votes.
Okay, motion fails. Is there a recommendation next? We just keep paying the temporary note, I guess, on everybody in the city's dime?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I will discuss with, like I said, the HOA and, and bond counsel and see how the timing is. We can see if we have, do you guys have two meetings a month or?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, let me check the calendar, see how it works, if we approve it in two weeks, and see if we can still stay on course. Otherwise, yeah, I mean, as I discussed with your finance director, to get these levies on the tax bill at the end of the year, we have to get the levies to the county clerk by mid-August. So that's kind of why it's crucial to adopt it. If, if the calendar falls through, we may have to push the bond back a year. I think we, do you know, do you off the top of your head, I think these temp notes might have one more year outstanding, if, if not. Anyway, I'll look at that as well.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, next, onto item two, consider presentation of twenty twenty-four financial audit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's another one.
You, man?
Get one of those books.
I need you to.
I didn't get a book. I got one of those. Three of them. Thank you. Arlo, I need, I need the other, the spiral notebook, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members, appreciate you having me here today. My name is Michael Gerber, a partner with Forbes Mizzards. We conducted the audit of your twenty twenty-four financial statements earlier this year. I'm here today to present the results of, of those statements of that audit. And I'd like to start by thanking your, your finance team, especially Dee, they always do a great job getting us what we need to do our work timely, responding to our questions, things like that, so thank you very much. I really appreciate all the, all the help that you've provided us here this past year. I, I do also want to mention, if you're used to looking at financial statements of maybe other entities and other, other industries, you're probably used to seeing reports that are on more of what we call an accrual basis of accounting. So they include accounts receivables, capital assets, long-term debt, things like that. The city is allowed to report under a certain Kansas statute that's a more cash basis type of reporting. So I want to point that out if you do happen to get really into the details of the statements, so there is a difference there. And, and the main reason I want to mention that is just past the table of contents, if you have the report there in front of you, is our, is our opinion. And although we've issued a, a clean opinion on the statutory requirements, you might see some words like adverse opinion, things like that. That narrative tends to raise some eyebrows sometimes, because you don't like to see an adverse opinion. But the reason that that wording is in there is because you are not under the accrual basis, you're under more of a cash basis. So I wanted to point that out, but you do have the, as clean of an opinion as you can, as you can get, and it's the opinion that you want as a result of an audit. So certainly good news there. With regards to the actual activity, on page four is where you're really going to see that activity. You'll see a report that shows cash at the beginning of the year, the receipts, the expenditures, and then cash at the end of the year. What I'll point out is cash has increased substantially year over year, mainly related to some of the notes that you're pulling out to do a lot of the capital projects around town. So cash up about seventeen million dollars year over year, that obviously will be spent down as you complete some of those projects. One other item that I'll point out within the financials is the general fund has increased about two million dollars. That's mainly related to the new sales tax, the city sales tax that was implemented just last year. Other than the financials, you'll see the notes starting on page six, really nothing to, to point out there, no new changes or anything like that. If you really want to get into the details, on page nineteen are all the budget to actual schedules for each of your individual funds. Again, if you really want to dig into the details. And then the last thing I want to mention is each year, we do a variety of walkthroughs for your cash inflows, outflows, things of that nature. If we find anything that would lead to us to believe maybe there's a higher likelihood of error or fraud could occur, we would have a written comment within this letter, that's the staple document that you have. What you'll notice as you flip through there is we do not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. So again, I think that speaks to not only this council, the tone at the top, but Sean, your, Sean and Dee, and your entire finance team looking out for the funds that the public has trusted them with. So certainly something that you want to see there, good controls over your assets. So with that, that covers my prepared remarks, but I will stand for questions or comments.
Any questions from council? Troy?
I move to receive and file the twenty twenty-four financial audit.
Do you have a second? Brandy?
Second.
Motion by Troy, seconded by Brandy to receive and file. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Next, item three, discuss and consider appointment to the planning and zoning, planning commission and board of zoning appeals. And you guys received the application of Addie Lowell, she's present tonight, actually. You want to come forward for just a second? And Addie's lived in Park City for about eight years, correct?
Right, eight years.
And you guys may recognize her face, she was here, was it last year?
It was maybe January.
January, so beginning of the year, and gave us a presentation on the USD two five nine bond issue. And I was telling the planning commission that she introduced herself as a proud resident of Park City, so I made a note to self, and now we have a board opening, so here she is.
Major regret mistake.
So she's happily volunteered to serve on the planning commission, so she's my nomination to fill the vacant position that's there. Brandy?
I move to approve the appointment of Vady Lau as member of the planning commission, board of zoning appeals with the term expiring May of twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you, Charlie? Second. Motion by Brandy, seconded by Charlie, all in favor? Aye. Same sign? Motion passes five zero, thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Next, item four, discuss and consider appointment to the community relations board. This is for the appointment of Jamie Buster as member of the community relations board with a term expiring January of twenty twenty-seven. Charlie?
I worked with Jamie for several years, she'd be a great addition to the CRB, so I recommend the appointment of Jamie Buster to the community relations board with a term expiring January twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you, George Glover?
I'll second the motion.
Motion to approve Jamie Buster for the term in January twenty twenty-seven, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion passes five zero. Onto item five. Discuss and consider approving bid tabulation and authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute a contract for streetscape and reserve B improvements for Park Center.
Yes, sir, in January, council approved resolution twelve thirty-six twenty twenty-five for streetscape and reserve B improvements to the Park Center District. A bid opening was conducted on June nineteenth with a total of three companies submitting bids. Prado Construction submitted the lowest combined bid of one million nine hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, which was above the engineer's estimate of one million, seven hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And it's broken out for the base bid of streetscapes, as well as the base bid for reserve B. Attached is a bid tabulation and notice of award. It's authorized and funded via temporary financing, followed by long-term general obligation bonds. Since staff recommends approval and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract to be executed on July first after the improvements or the charter ordinance goes into effect on July first. Stand for any questions?
Thank you. Troy?
Well, I would have moved to approve, but my computer just died on me, so I can't read exactly what I need to approve.
Are you moving to approve the bid tabulation and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute the contract with Prado Construction in the amount not to exceed one million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven, sixty-seven to be paid out of the capital project fund?
That is correct.
Brandy?
I second.
Any discussion on that project or item? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion passes five zero. Okay, governing body remarks? Charlie?
I, I appreciate staff putting the, the street dedication ceremony together, I thought that was really neat, really special, just looking at the history of where we've been as a city and where we're at today, and the leaders that helped get us there, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who came out to our annual fishing derby last week. We did get set back two hours, I'd like to thank the volunteers who showed up and weathered literally two hours of rain. So I appreciate the fact that you held down the canopies while the wind was blowing, and you stuck around. Also, the donors, the people that donated to the derby, I want to thank them, also the volunteers, but just everybody that came out. We had, our numbers were down with the weather being like it was, but I think we all had a good time anyway. Also want to invite everybody out to our July fourth parade coming up on July fourth. Thank you.
Linda?
I just want to wish everybody happy Fourth of July, hope it's safe, and I'm excited that we're going to do some floating and some celebrating for our fourth activity, so looking forward to those.
Very much. Troy?
I really don't have anything to add.
Brandy?
CCUA does meet this Thursday at four thirty here in the, the conference room over there. And then I do appreciate the mayor ceremony, I think that was the loudest I've ever heard the pledge of allegiance in this room. So that was pretty awesome, so that was a good idea. Thanks.
Very good. All right, I don't have anything tonight. I would entertain a non-debatable motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Linda?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Charlie, seconded by Linda, we adjourn, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five zero.